...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Second.
Which is being made second to approve the regular agenda discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda is before the council and all items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered separately as normal sequence on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience or any council member that wishes to either add or remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
So move.
Second.
Consent agenda. Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
The minutes of the regular city council meeting held July 11th and a special city council meeting held July 19th before the council. Is there anyone in the audience or in the council that wishes to make any changes to the minutes? I would entertain a motion for their approval.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to approve the regular city council meeting minutes for July 11th and a special city council meeting held July 19th discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
And this evening, I'd like to announce that we have a new firefighter with us this evening. If you would come forward and chief, if you could come up. Craig, you want to start? So if you raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Craig Magatash.
Aye, Craig Magatash.
I pronounced that right, didn't I?
You did.
Okay. Promise that I will humbly serve all customers.
Promise that I will humbly serve all customers.
With an urgent response to their crisis.
With an urgent response to their crisis.
With compassion, sincerity, and concern.
With compassion, sincerity, and concern.
Patience, kindness, and respect.
Patience, kindness, and respect.
I promise that I will at all times.
I promise that I will at all times.
Conduct myself in a manner.
Conduct myself in a manner.
That reflects positively.
That reflects positively.
On the fire department and the city of Detroit Lakes.
On the fire department and the city of Detroit Lakes.
Finally, I promise to follow the policies.
Finally, I promise to follow the policies.
Of the fire department.
Of the fire department.
uphold the laws of our state and nation.
Uphold the laws of our state and nation.
And the ordinances of the city of Detroit Lakes.
And the ordinances of the city of Detroit Lakes.
And then I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you. My wife is back here.
You want Andrea.
I'm sorry, this is my wife Andrea.
Hi Andrea. Thanks chief.
Thank you.
And welcome aboard, thank you. Say would you, will you sign this and then give it to Carrie when you get a minute?
Yeah.
Thank you. At this time, I'll adjourn the regular meeting and call the order of public hearing to receive public comments on the proposed abatement of diseased trees for 2024. And I'll call in our public works director Sean King to introduce this item. Sean?
Mayor and council, this is just our annual tree inventory. We drive around town, look at diseased and dead trees, and this is just a process of getting them removed.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that has any question about the diseased tree abatement or comment? And if you'd come up here so we can hear you better, please, thank you. For the record, will you state your name and address?
Mary Lee, 1220 Kent Street. My question is, I got the letter saying it's going to be $1,050 to remove the tree. We are senior citizens on fixed income. Will that go on our taxes to be paid over a period of time or how does that work?
Yes, I'll have one of our city staff field that question, Heidi.
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor. The assessments that are over $250 for diseased trees are spread out over five years. And so, yes, they would be assessed to your property taxes if they're not paid by November 15th. There would be an interest on that as well, but yes. If you have any further questions, you can let us know. And then, there is also a senior deferral program on some of our assessments, so you can contact us as well if you think you might qualify for that program.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the issue of the diseased tree abatement? Hearing none, that public hearing is closed and I would entertain a motion from the council.
Okay, I want to mention too that many people had just one tree to be taken down, but quite a few families have five or six down trees, so that's quite a few of trees that are urgent. It's approximately 65 trees and all are taken down. But the committee reviewed this and gave a resolution ordering the abatement of diseased trees for 2024. I so move.
Second. Motion's been made in second to adopt the proposed abatement of diseased trees in Detroit Lakes for 2024. Discussion by the council. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All in favor of the motion, carries. Without objection, Matt, can we take Slide C first? Dr. Kim?
Okay. Can I say consideration of resolution approving a variance allow a 15-foot side yard setback and a 20-foot rear yard setback in an I-1 light industrial district for construction of a 10,400 square foot flex space shop condo at 1070 Randolph Road and 1065 Fortune Avenue. This was discussed at planning commission as well as CDC. Both were approved unanimously and I so move.
Second, motion been made in second to approve a variance allowing a 15-foot side yard and a 20-foot rear yard setback at 1070 Randolph Road and 1065 Fortune Avenue. Discussion? Mr. and Mrs. Garnes, any questions? Okay, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All in favor of the motion, carries.
Thank you, Your Honor. Moving back to 5A.
Yep.
5A and 5B both pertain to the same parcel, which is all here presumably a bowling alley. So by 5A's consideration of resolution approving the preliminary plant of the port on Little Detroit Lake at 1377 Westlake Drive. Planning commission discussed this as well as CDC, both for unanimous approvals and I so move.
Second. Before we take a vote, I think there's at least one or a couple people that maybe want to address the council, and so now would be the time to come up. Again, if you'd state your name and address for a minute, please.
My name is Deb Grobstgard. I'm the association manager for the Detroit Lakes Bowling Association. I live at 28341 South Buffalo Lake Road, Detroit Lakes, Minnesota. And basically, I probably have talked to many of you on the council already about how we as an association feel about the bowling alley. And granted, it isn't built yet because it hasn't been torn down, so we're still occupying it. We're now open for the season on the 3rd of September. But basically, we're looking for support from the city of Detroit Lakes should we be able to find an investor or someone who would be willing to build us a new location and a new bowling alley. The bowling is not just the support of sport for young adults or the best athletes. We have youngsters bowling, we have league bowling for the kids in the first grade through the 12th grade. We actually have a couple of bowlers who still bowl that are in their 90s. So it is a sport that can be done by anyone. We do have, right now, we have like seven leagues that are bowling. We've got a couple of youth leagues. We have our adaptive bowling league for our physically challenged students from Detroit Lakes and the area. Those kids that do participate in adaptive bowling are travel team bowlers. We've got some youth that are also travel team bowlers. We sponsor some fundraisers, we help work with Alliance, we worked with the Honor Flight this year where we were raising money. And we also have a scholarship fund tournament each year for our youth. We just know that we can't present the tearing down of this bowling alley, but we would really, really appreciate the support of the city council and the city of Detroit Lakes so that bowlers aren't taking their money to other cities and that we help to build Detroit Lakes and help the sport of bowling prosper in this community.
Well, let's find an investor who will also support a new bowling alley.
Have you done the power bowling app? Take a bowling app. But thank you.
Does anyone else want to speak to anything about the bowling alley? Okay, we have a motion, a second, any discussion on the council? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All in favor? And that was A and B, correct now?
That was A.
That was A, okay.
Moving to 5B, it's consideration of resolution approving a conditional use permit to allow 14-unit planned unit development to be named the port on Little Detroit Lake at 1377 Westlake Drive, the current place of the bowling alley. Excuse me, we address the said planning commission as well as CDC, both unanimous and I so move.
Second. Motion's been made in second to approve a conditional use permit for a 14-unit PUV called the port at 1377 Westlake Drive. Discussion?
Matt, I was going to have discussion on the last motion, but I just wanted to recognize and thank you for everything the bowling association does and that recognizing that this was a private owner of a building, we did not make the decision for it to go. And so that connects with this resolution.
Sure, good, okay. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All in favor of the motion, carries.
Hi, I just wanted to say just a second, my detail, I sure appreciate your approach to this and trying to work with this to bring back a positive sport in Detroit Lakes. So Larry, could we add that to the development authority agenda for next meeting? Just discussing.
Certainly.
Thank you. That's all, Your Honor.
Further than the public works, Chairman Zeeman.
Matt, before we go on to the public works, I'd like to make a comment in regards to last month's community development meeting that we had with rezoning and also with suspending and so forth like this time.
Go ahead.
Okay, as we know, last month's council meeting on July 9th, we had rezoning of South Shore neighborhood where the council was rezoning this RA, we're supposedly under RA, under our new neighborhood that was rezoning, developer Brett Keen wanted RM zoning for 60-foot tall building with six floors and 150 apartments that were rented with $1,500 to $2,500 a month and it was under the affordable housing. This zoning was called RM, not RA, at the neighborhood, the avenue on that night of July 9th. We then came to the public hearing portion of the meeting and we had a man by the name of Brian Grammer, who lives on Lake Union, so came for it. He said that he was at the meeting that night because the developer Brett Keen could not be there and he was there to speak for him. Mr. Grammer said, and he told all of us that we could trust Brett Keen as the developer and he has an excellent reputation for his projects. After much discussion and questions, Brian Grammer then said, came out and admitted that he was a disaffirmant, but he was also a partner in this development project along with Brett Keen. Brian Grammer also said that he would consider talking to the neighbors and he said he would be willing to meet with the neighborhood. And as this public hearing continued, going toward the very, before the vote came, a 10-year-old girl and her mother came forward and the 10-year-old girl said that I wish that I could live in an apartment building like that and my mother would too, and her mother also agreed. At the end of this meeting and after the vote to approve this RM zoning for the 150-unit apartment, we found out that the 10-year-old girl and her mother were actually chairman, Sean Carlson's wife and their daughter who lived Willow Springs. I asked Sean if he was planning to move his family from Willow Springs to this new apartment house and he told me no. Council members need to be trusted and be able to tell the truth. This action by the chairman of the planning commission, Sean Carlson, gives all of us, I feel, a black eye along with the members of the planning commission. Are we so desperate to get 150 in requirement cost that Sean had to have his family come and say that they wanted to move into that building so we could pass this with the developer? I feel that action by Sean Carlson warrants him to step down from his role as being chairman of the planning commission. The taxpayers and voters of Detroit Lakes expect more from the elected officials and they deserve better care. Put yourself in these neighborhood shoes, this is probably one of the major investments in their homes and then we're playing games with them. This is not proper and I hope that we never will do this again. I've never seen this happen on the 20 years that I've been on the city council.
Okay, Ron, let's get to the agenda, please.
Your Honor, may I make a brief response?
Sure, I promise.
Absolutely. First and foremost, I am proud of my daughter for having the courage to get up and say something. And she and my family, just like any other family in this community, any other member of this community, has absolutely the right to get up and speak their opinion. They, and I would encourage not just them or any of your family or anyone else in this community to get up and speak, but get up and anticipate and use that opportunity. From the standpoint of accusations of lying, my, I looked at the transcript because you asked this question. My daughter got up and said that it's near Lake and there's a playground nearby. My wife said that it seems like a nice neighborhood, there's lots of kids, and that we need housing for families. And that was the extent of the comments. And I don't appreciate the accusation, Ron, that there was anything underhanded or anything else. At the end of the day, I would absolutely encourage my family and any other family to get up and speak their mind at any public meeting at any time when they have the opportunity. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, that's going to be the end of that for the, you know, Kate gentleman. All right, let's move on to the agenda.
Okay, under the public works committee, a discussion took place today in regards to Jake breaking in parts of our town by trucks. This has been brought up before, but one thing Detroit Lakes currently is going to have an ordinance in regards to Nick breaking, so the public works is going to have our staff to go ahead and come up with an ordinance for Jake breaking and we'll hopefully have that come back that next month's meeting when we get a look at this and through, so we see how that comes out. So that was the discussion. Okay, going on to item B, consideration to approval of special event application for the next Beersley race, which is going to be held on September 7th, 2024. This usually brings in around 2,000 people, I'm going to have Sean King kind of give an explanation of what was going to happen here and we have two plans, the larger going to do one plan, hopefully have one.
Mayor and council, yes, this is just the annual event for the Dick Beersley Run. In the event, I did look through it, all the races are very similar to what they have done in the past. The only exception would be the half marathon, option A and option B. Option A would run past Frazee up to Bucksmill and turn around at Bucksmill. Option B would be to turn around at Frazee Street. And I know we discussed this at public works today and decided option B would be the best option at this point, not knowing whether or not Frazee would be open. If that is not open, we kind of limit on where people can even turn around downtown.
Okay, the committee reviewed this and asked that because of street construction downtown, we would go ahead to make approval for a special notification for the Beersley race using this plan B and I so move.
Second. Motion's been made in second to approve a special event application for the Beersley races on September 7th. Discussion?
Can I say something as a runner?
Sure.
I was running a few times. So option B, I kind of took a look at it and that would then run up Roosevelt Road, correct, a little bit from North Shore Drive and extend up to Roosevelt Road and then run through the residential neighborhood?
Is that correct, Sean?
That does appear to be correct.
Okay.
You know, from the logistics standpoint too, I think it, I think it, did you talk to James Botman about it? I mean, does it make it a little more difficult to control traffic, I mean, and the direct, the traffic for the racers too?
I did talk to James and his biggest thing would be if we ran past Frazee and recovered back, because we're ending the race this year, this is different, we're going to be ending it at Washington Ballpark, so they're coming back downhill for that last little bit. They'll be running up, but then you should be able to avoid some of the residential areas, but you'll have a longer strike coming back down to finish the race. Which, you're talking a block and a half.
And I should also mention on this, too, the one that concerned was the timing, we were going to have this from the business of downtown, they didn't want to have an interrupt their business, so we're going to, this is going to be around 8 o'clock, is that correct, Sean?
They figured it would be open back up until 8:45.
Up until 8:45, so it shouldn't affect the businesses of downtown. So that interrupting their business opens.
So by choosing option B, you don't even affect those that are north of Frazee?
Right.
Are you signed up for the race, Mike?
Uh, I'm on the committee. My son and his girlfriend are, so they're running in.
All right, any further discussion?
I prefer option A.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor of the motion, carries.
Okay, on the next item, item C, a consideration of resolution approving adoption of assessment rule for the Detroit Lakes Boulevard project. There's just five lots on there, Sean, you will explain this to the public tonight.
Mayor, that would be me.
Okay, John.
Mayor and council, a little bit of a unique assessment rule here, this is, as old and concealing pointed out, the five properties on Detroit Lakes Boulevard that contacted us after we had started improvements on North Shore Drive and more or less asked if we could also redo their street, which is a very, very narrow dead end street, but is in fact a public street. And the only way to get that incorporated into the project is at that point, we had already done all of our hearings and assessment rules, was for them to sign assessment waivers, agree to the assessment, just like everybody else that's getting improvements of that project. They did, and we have those, so if that's what we're not having a hearing, we have five waivers from the five impacted properties, so just the adoption.
Okay. Ron, you guys want to say that each homeowner will pay $4,400 for a share of that project? Do you need to give this a summary to go through the resolution?
Second. Motion's been made in second to approve a resolution adopting the assessment rule for Detroit Lakes Boulevard project. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor of the motion, carries.
Okay, next item, item B, consideration of resolution authorizing preliminary engineering report for Forest Street. John?
Mayor and council, this is just the initial step on what would be a street utility reconstruction project for next summer. As it stands right now, this is the only project really that we have on radar for next summer for street utility reconstruction. So the resolution is simply to authorize preparation for reports. I'll probably bring that back to the council in September or October if I have hearings on that.
Okay, the committee reviewed this and we give consideration to authorize a preliminary engineering report for next month's meeting, I so move.
Second. Motion's been made in second to adopt a resolution authorizing a preliminary engineering report for Forest Street. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor of the motion, carries.
Okay, the next item is item B, it's a consideration accepting our city engineering report for what, if I'm calling, John, gives an update.
Mayor and council, again, definitely some work happening on the street rehabilitation project, North Shore Drive's been under construction now for a couple of weeks, including 11, and we're getting ready to do work as well on Garnett and West River. Those are primarily the segments that are left in the project. Those are all got completed last week, we just have pavement margins left to put on that. But I expect most, bulk of the paving and the construction should be wrapped up by probably the middle of next week, so that project's moving along. Willow Springs, nothing to report. West downtown project, all of the underground utilities that they complete on Frazee Street, so the contractor's starting to work towards the street reconstruction. Got concrete curb and gutter and things like that that are going to start up in the middle of the week. HOG has transitioned over to East Block of Front Street, started working along the north side of the mall there. They'll work in that area for, it'll be the next several weeks here before they move into other areas on Link and on Frazee. The water tower project, we are scheduled to have a pre-construction meeting with the contractor later this week. We have hit just a little bit of a speed bump on that project. We have to do an archaeological investigation on the tank site, which was a surprise to say the least, so we're sort of scrambling to work through that archaeological phase one, but are making some progress on that, but might delay the start of the construction just a bit. As it stands right now, construction is still slated to begin sometime this fall, it will take a couple of years in that project. Highway 10 east or a water extension to the motor dealership, that work is scheduled to begin next year.
Okay, the committee reviewed the engineer's monthly report, I see they've accepted.
Second. Motion's been made in second to accept the engineer's monthly project status report discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor of the motion, carries. Any motion on that, Sir Yonah? Moving to the finance committee, Chairman Josephson.
I have a seven A, I'll head over to Kelsey to give us a little background, then I'll read the entire thing and get motion on table.
Mayor and council, last month, the city council approved a resolution approving a financing of two new hangars off the airport through a local placement through a local bank. If you recall, the interest rates were a little bit higher because it was a taxable bond, it was over 7% interest rate. Had additional conversations with Metro County. Currently, we're looking at rescinding that resolution and to forego the placement of financing with the bank and looking at financing that internally instead. The idea is that we'd rather pay ourselves an interest rate rather than paying the bank a 7% interest rate. The county was receptive to that, I got taken to Public Utilities yet next month. We'll probably use their loan pool that they have available. So that's the reason why we're rescinding is we're going to choose instead of going outside for financing, to do internal financing instead.
Sir Met?
Yeah.
The resolution is consideration to a resolution rescinding resolution number 2024-0709F, which approved the issuance of the city bond to finance improvements to the Detroit Lakes Metro County Airport and related documents, including the term sheet for such bond and a pledge between the airport commission, city, and county. Finance committee, we're with this today recommends approval, I so move.
Second. Motion's been made in second to adopt a resolution rescinding resolution number 2024-0709F, outlined by Chairman Josephson. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor of the motion, carries. Anything else on the finance agenda?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Anything, Chairwoman Spry, on the public safety committee?
We did not have any agenda items, I was unable to be...
Uh, we did not have any agenda items, I was unable to be at the committee meeting due to work time. Um, and Ron had attended the meeting, he suggested maybe, uh, Chief Todd could update us a little bit on how, uh, we fest went and any other activities. So I agree, so.
Thank you for giving me the time to prepare, Ron.
Should I not have a situation, I'm sorry.
No, he's solid, he's got, uh, he's never been in the loss.
Yeah, so, uh, the sheriff's office obviously is the primary law enforcement provider for the we fest event, the showgrounds are helping the county, uh, we do see increased traffic numbers, uh, so increased traffic accidents and some increased shop openings during the time. Uh, my understanding from the sheriff's office is that the dependents numbers were down at we fest pretty significantly, um, so that resulted in less, uh, less issues with, with their deputies out at the scene. Did you have anything else you wanted me to address?
No, I did not.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, you, Ron.
That's it, you, that, for the public safety? Chairman Dom, any other liquor company control meeting?
Yes, your honor, we are our longest liquor and gambling meeting we've ever had since I've been on it, disregarding cannabis regulations and I think we're, uh, heading in the right direction on how to figure this thing out, so we're still in discussion.
No other?
And then, one thing on the liquor store report, um, Mitch was saying liquor store sales were down during we fest also, otherwise things are going great.
Thank you. Public Utilities Commission agenda, Mike, is there?
We actually have some.
Okay, go ahead.
So, Mr. Mayor, uh, the, uh, Public Utilities Commission doesn't meet until tomorrow, um, the normally scheduled time, but, uh, we want to get this before the council today. Uh, General Manager Roberts has been, uh, negotiating with Apex Engineering for the Construction Management Services Agreement, and so with the city council approval, uh, the cost on that is, uh, for the service is five hundred and forty, uh, check, five hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, I believe it is, um, that's paid outside of the, the general operations of the Public Utilities. So I have item ten A, consideration to approving a Construction Management Services Agreement with Apex Engineering for the elevated water storage project, and I so move.
Second. Motion's been made seconded to approve Construction Management Services Agreement with Apex Engineering for the new water tower, discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pooz, and she carries. Before we continue with the agenda, there's a gentleman in the back who asked if he could address the council. And because he's a veteran, I said yes. Thank you for your service. And this, this has nothing on our agenda today. Thanks, sir. And you'll be great.
Now, Mr. Spry, I'm talking about the Constitution.
Okay, we'll be great, because that's a long document.
Well, actually, it's a copy of the document.
Okay.
I'd like to give you all.
Got an extra one, your son?
Oh, dear. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council for allowing me to speak today. Um, I'd spoken before this committee, I don't think I've ever talked about this stuff subject, and I've talked to the school board and the school board think, can't seem to do anything about it. So I talked to the superintendent last month to speak on it, he told me I'd be better off coming to you guys, so that's why I'm here tonight. I'd like this man, this mandate to be signed by you, Mr. Mayor, and sent to the school board. Because under your democracy, you have no rights, because Nancy Pelosi, her infinite wisdom threw away all your rights in October two thousand nine, when she said, "You cannot know what is in the field until after this passed." By her doing that, she threw out your right to peaceably assemble and petition the government for redress agreements. Then she went and added more to it, more salt to injury, because she said that was the true intent of the founding fathers. Now let me tell you what the true intent of her founding fathers says. The founding fathers never intended on you having any rights. So therefore, what you're teaching in your school, in this school district, is that we are a democracy, because that's what the Minnesota Department of Education has required. All I'm asking with this mandate is to clarify what that means. And I have listed the three things that it means. Now, I know everybody will be screaming, "Blamer, oh, you can't do that, we got to have a public hearing." No, we don't. Because Nancy Pelosi threw it out in October two thousand nine. Like I said, she threw out the First Amendment part that says that we have the right to peaceably assemble and petition our government for redress agreements, which is you! But she threw it away so they could, you could have your democracy constitution. You know, I don't ever remember hearing anybody yelling and screaming about that. So everybody must agree with me on that point. So why I'm asking, Mr. Mayor, is you sign this and send it to District, School District twenty-two and issue this mandate that they be clar- they clarify what they mean by democracy. Because I can tell you something, these kids are being taught.
Okay, we got to wrap this up. I'm not, I'm not going to sign this, by the way, but thank you for your comments.
Okay.
Getting back to the agenda, we have, uh, primary election and a general election coming up, and we need to appoint a council member to the Becker County canvassing force for both of those elections. Uh, the candidate from the council cannot be on the ballot, I would be willing to do it, but I'm on the ballot, so is there someone who's not on the ballot but's on the council? Is there someone that would be willing to represent the city in the canvassing for those two elections? That's what I thought was going to happen.
I, I usually do this, but it only takes about forty minutes, so it doesn't take very long at all.
But, but, uh, you have to be in the, it's August fifteenth at two P M.
Yes.
Anybody? Uh, what did you think about it and you, uh?
I'll jump on that grenade.
Will you do it?
Yeah. Actually, just, uh, August fifteenth at two?
Yes.
There's, there's thirty.
August fifteenth at two.
At the courthouse.
Courthouse.
Yes.
And, and the one for the November election, is that date?
I'll know that date as we get closer. The board, the county commission has to set the canvassing date, so I'll know that date when it's close on.
We'll talk about it.
Yeah.
Very good. Patty LaVar has, uh, decided to resign from our Arts and Culture Commission, I'd like to recommend the name of Emma Two to replace Patty on the Arts and Culture Commission. So? Second. Motion's been made seconded to appoint Emma Two to the Arts and Culture Commission, discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pooz, and she carries. Information and announcements, the city election final date is open until five P M. Tomorrow, Carrie, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, the budget meeting schedule for the balance of the budget meetings are listed, unless any need more. Uh, the joint government meetings are listed for the balance of the year and the council meeting dates are listed for the balance of the year. Anyone from the city staff have anything else to put in the order this evening, Kelsey?
Mayor, one thing I'd add is, uh, August twenty-second, they have a budget meeting. Uh, we had a presentation from Marshmallow Animal Shelter last week, I've lined up a tour of their facility, a meeting following the August twenty-second budget meeting, so I understand that may be tough for some of you to go, but it's open invitation, if you want to take a tour, we're going to do that at eight thirty A M. on the twenty-second. The only other thing I was going to add, Mayor, is we talked about the budget meeting, about the library grant that was received, I haven't corresponded with all of council on that, so I do have the letters from Department of Education that, uh, granted that award for seven hundred forty-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars for the library, uh, has a matching grant, so we've had a lot of discussion on the budget already about that project and how we'll come up with our local share.
But no action taken today?
No.
Okay, any other city staff? If not, we, uh, no Jay, no John, Mike, Matt. No, sir.
Jackie.
I did miss this, at the finance committee meeting, I got notification on our text messages, but, um, I'd like to wish you a happy birthday to our finance officer. Happy birthday.
We don't need to discuss.
The business of this council has come to conclusion, the meetings are adjourned.